Good afternoon. My name is Libby Slappy. I am a member of Sunrise, which is a movement to stop climate change. We support the Green New Deal. Our local Sunrise hub is part of the Cedar Rapids Voting Rights Coalition, and there are many members of the coalition: the Advocates for Social Justice, Co-Votes, the League of United Latin American Citizens, Mount Mercy University, Indivisible, the NAACP, and the League of Women Voters. So this forum today is part of the coalition's voter education efforts that help voters make informed decisions for the upcoming elections. And we hope that over the course of this program you will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for our county. This third of three candidate forums features three candidates running for Lynn County Supervisor, and that's in District One. In alphabetical order, James Hauser, Kirsten Running Marquardt, and Brianna Oxley. So first, let me explain the procedures for the forum, which each candidate received ahead of time. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement, and 90 seconds -- well, I guess it's actually two minutes now -- two minutes to answer each question. And opening statements will be in alphabetical order by the candidate's last name. The timekeeper is sitting in the front row, and when half a minute of speaking time remains, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says 30 seconds, indicating speakers have 30 seconds to finish their answers. At 15 seconds, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says 15 seconds. Speakers should stop when the stop sign is shown. And if speakers continue speaking after the stop sign is held up, I will play the music -- no, I will say "thank you" and I will move on to the next speaker. Candidates will confine their statements and responses to relevant issues and refrain from personal attacks. ProVideo is recording this event, which will be posted on the League of Women Voters website by probably Monday of this week -- next week, and the League will have the link on their Facebook page as well. So right now, please turn off your cell phones. If at any time during the forum you cannot hear the moderator or candidates, please let us know. We request that you treat all the candidates fairly. We ask that you remain quiet during the forum; no clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that after their closing statements, we will all clap. You're encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the pieces of paper provided. And we ask that the questions be relevant to all the candidates and must apply to issues or qualifications for their particular office, Lynn County Supervisor. And if you need another piece of paper, or if you need to have your question collected, just raise your hand and a League member will assist you. Coalition volunteers review the questions for legibility, clarity, and applicability to all candidates, and I will read as many questions as time allows, combining some similar questions striving to cover a number of topics. So that's the drill. Candidates, are you ready? Yes, terrific. So we will start with opening statements, and again, in alphabetical order. Jim Hauser, we're going to start with you, and if you'd like to come up to the mic. And it's going to be a lot of back and forth from the microphone, so welcome, Jim.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum for us today. I'm Jim Hauser, and I'm excited to announce, or you already know that I'm running for reelection to the office of Lynn County Supervisor in District One, where I've lived all my adult life. I first served in the office to fill a vacancy, and then I was elected to six terms. I served four terms on a three-member board, and I served two terms on a five-member board, so I'm very familiar with the makeup of the board of supervisors, you know, a three- or five-member board. So I bring to the office 23 years of experience. Some of my most memorable accomplishments and experiences were in the office where we did a public radio system. We redesigned the mental health system at the state of Iowa, and I served on the State County Management Committee for three years, rewriting the rules for delivery of services. We did all of our secondary road shops. There was about 10 buildings that we moved and relocated to better serve the role in a corporate area of Lynn County. Some of the other memorable experiences and accomplishments was the flood of 2008. As you all remember, our Lynn County buildings were totally decimated during that flood, and one of my experiences was over at the courthouse. Spent all day out there trying to save public records out of the basement. We got done, I went to leave. I had to drive through a foot of water leaving the courthouse on Third Avenue Bridge. The next day, down to the Public Service Center, and we had a foot of -- I was in a boat, trying to get to the building, and capsized, and I was in water up to my waist. That was very memorable experiences. After the flood, the Iowa Legislature passed Rebuild Iowa, and with their help and funding, we were able to rebuild all of our buildings with state funds, federal funds, and it looks like she's giving me the boot there on my time. So we'll offer more opportunities for you to ask me questions during the rest of the -- thank you.
Okay, alphabetically, next is Kirsten.
Cousin.
Oh, yeah, because Running Marquardt comes -- yeah, yeah, go ahead. Because Kirsten comes after Hauser, how's that?
I was a little confused about that, but that's okay. Hello and good afternoon. I'm Kirsten Running Marquardt, whatever alphabetical order you want to choose, Libby Slappy. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting us on the host, and also the Cedar Rapids Public Library. Every time I walk in this building, it just makes me really proud of my community and kind of all that we've been through over the years. I've been a state representative for the past 13 years. I've worked really hard, not only for the people in my area, but for the county as well. Have passed some really good pieces of legislation and worked in a bipartisan manner to make sure that people got a fair shake. One of my biggest strengths is collaborating with different levels of government, whether it be federal, county, city, state, and making government work for people. That's what I want to do for County Supervisor. I think I can take those skills and my fresh ideas. I want to make sure the entire county gets a fair shake when it comes to economic development and workforce development. Mental health, parity, access is very important to me and my community, and I want to make sure that we continue supporting them adequately. And then my number-one thing I'd really like to do is make Lynn County a place where people want to move here and stay here, where they want to live, grow, and raise their families. My husband and I chose to move back. I was born and raised here in Lynn County on the west side of Cedar Rapids, and went to college and came back here to raise my family. And that's things like building on our parks, trails, and, you know, thinking outside the box on ways that we can collaborate with not only different forms of government, but also different agencies to really move our county forward together. Thank you all for being here today on a Saturday. It's really nice outside, and there's many other things you can do, but you're all engaged in our government and elections, and that's what's really important. I've come up here today, I'm going to ask for your vote, but I'm excited to talk about different issues and where we are the same or where we're different. Thank you.
My name is Bree Oxley, and I am running for Lynn County Supervisor, District One, for this open seat for this upcoming primary in June, and then there will be a general in the fall and November as well. I am a teacher, so I love to see all the teachers in here and friends of education. Thank you for what you've done over the last few years, because we know it has been quite the ride. I just want to thank the League, all of the volunteers here today for helping put this on, and our Cedar Rapids Public Library for getting back into hosting events. We are excited to see that. And thanks to ProVideo for being here to film this today, and most importantly, thank you. As a government and social studies teacher, I care a lot about education like this, and it's so great to see people show up or watching later at home on the video and who want to learn more about candidates and races for our local government. I'm sure at some point we'll experience a little more localness and have a train coming through as well. I think there's been one for every forum today, too. So I am a fourth-generation Iowan teacher. I currently teach at Roosevelt Middle School and teach eighth grade Government and Social Studies. So the joke I'm sure everyone is tired of is what's more dramatic, the 13-year-olds I have or the content that I teach? It is both, for sure. I am a proud union member with my local teachers' union. I've served on the Cedar Rapids Education Association Executive Board, our Regional Board, and our State Board as well, too. I graduated from Springville High School on the other side of the county, and we have a family farm that's 179 years old. Many of you know my Grandma Jean Oxley of the Jean Oxley Building, and you have really been around, if you know my Grandpa Mike Oxley, from serving in the House and Senate here in Iowa as well. I'm looking forward to getting to share what I have experienced as a teacher and a community member over the last few years with you today. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move into the questions, and we're going to deal with the Slappy Random Rotation System. It's kind of an odd one. I thought it was alphabetical and had my grid all worked out, and it's -- who knows? So we're going to start with Kirsten, Running Marquardt. If you'll come up to the mic. The first question is, what ways can Lynn County be involved in affordable housing?
So there's a couple of different things that we can do for affordable housing. One, I know that currently we're working with -- looking at using some funding moving forward for the homeless shelter that is currently moving forward. I think we can do a good job on that piece, collaborating with different forms of governments and nonprofits moving forward, so that it's not just sort of all on the backs of the county for a homeless shelter, but that we're doing the best job we can with the resources we have in working in that area. I think on affordable housing, it's having conversations. When there was a Dray Show, I organized a group of all of the -- excuse me, the mobile home communities across the county, and we held a meeting. And from there, it moved forward as a listserv, but united way, and also Matthew 25 continued to work with the mobile home communities to see when we can -- when we have a disaster, but then not only when we have a disaster, what are the needs in those communities moving forward. We also, as a county, can work with landlords across the county in rural and urban areas, asking them not only to make sure that it's fair and equitable where they are renting to folks at, but then also that maybe possibly giving incentives, not necessarily monetarily, but other kinds of incentives to folks who will be willing to rent to people who need a second chance, whether that's they have a record, whether that is different things on their record or evictions. What can we do to work together to find housing solutions with folks? Also, I've had a history of working as a state legislator with AIFA, the Iowa Finance Administration, for different low and mid-income housing over the years. And my time is done, so we can't go into that, but there's a wide array of things that we can do that won't necessarily cost money to move our county forward for affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten. Bree, you are up next. What ways can Lynn County be involved in affordable housing?
Perfect, thank you. This is a huge question, as I have been out there knocking doors all around our district, hearing from people, and what I hear in my own classroom, or from families that I have as well, too. This is a huge issue. So I want to take this in kind of a two-part piece as well. It's not just about affordable housing. That also ties into our workforce housing. I think we have a vision when we say affordable housing of who that may or may not include. I want to open that up to workforce housing as well. As a young person who has been in my journey of finding a home in our county as well, too, this hits home with me. So as we talk about different resources and how we can dive into this, Lynn County was very fortunate, along with City of Cedar Rapids and others, to receive $44 million in American Rescue Plan money. And our first round has already been given out, and there will be a second round coming as well. A lot of that did go to nonprofits, businesses, and groups that helped with that affordable housing on both fronts of it, not just the family piece, but our workforce and wanting people to stay here as well, too. I think when we use that money or other incentives, we can talk about local landlords and smaller businesses like Eric Guchman and his properties group, and how they really focus on the missing middle as well, too. It's my favorite phrase to use when we talk about duplexes, carriage houses, all sorts of things that can help with exactly what we're talking about. We also have the Alliance for Equitable Housing, which includes the City of Cedar Rapids, Marion, and some others with the nonprofits and county to work together to discuss how we can pool those resources and what should be going where. I also want to highlight Matthew 25's Cultivate Hope Grocery Store right down on Ellis, just a couple blocks from me. When we have those hubs and centers for food and our basic needs, that can also help rejuvenate some neighborhoods and promote people moving to that area, when we have entertainment, basic needs like food and water as well, too.
Thank you. Jim Hauser. What ways can Lynn County be involved in affordable housing?
Well, Lynn County has a longstanding commitment to affordable housing way back when we used to have properties that would come back on the tax rolls. We would abate those taxes to different organizations that were in Lynn County that would take those lots and redevelop them. So there's a lot of lots around Cedar Rapids and the Wellington Heights area, down even by our county administrative building that have been redeveloped. We've worked with Matthew 25 with economic development funds that we set aside back many budget cycles ago, and then now, of course, with the ARPA funds. The ARPA funds comes down to us from the federal government, and that was a windfall for counties and cities and states across the United States, getting this money that has designations into how it has to be used. So it requires the county to set up a process where cities and local jurisdictions can submit their applications, and then those applications are weighed, and then the money's been distributed. We've already distributed about half of that $44 million to different organizations, cities throughout the area. And we have a longstanding arrangement with the City of Cedar Rapids and Marion through economic development promoting affordable housing. The county is not in the business of building houses or affordable housing. We work with other jurisdictions within our county that have sewer and water available so that products are built where there's already existing sewer and water and infrastructure in place.
Thank you. Okay, our next question has to do with the climate resolution, and we're going to start with Bree Oxley. How do you plan on following through with the Lynn County climate resolution that was passed in 2019?
All right, this is a great topic, another big topic that's out there for the county and other local governments as well, too. So this, yeah, is a very important piece of work that the Lynn County Supervisors and other groups and departments and services that are connected to the county, and they have been working on that. I also want to give a shout-out to a lot of our nonprofits and groups that are here in this room and that I know will be watching later, and their work to help do the research, promote this, and see this through to the end as well. So when I come into this, so thinking as a supervisor here and what this might look like to carry this forward, the important piece is going to be working with others. I want to make sure I'm talking to our Sustainability Quarter, I'm talking to our Conservation Director, I'm talking to our folks over at our Soil Department and going through those. I'm not going to have all of the answers for this. If I did, you know, if anyone did, we would have solved this a long time ago. This is about changing hearts and minds first and then getting that action to follow. So I want to work with our groups who are already doing this work, our experts that are in the county, and help them see this through as well. This is not just the supervisors working on this. This is going to be a huge group effort, and then we need to bring that out to our citizens as well, whether we are talking about water or our soil, our farms. I think we've all experienced every type of natural disaster we've had. We have another one to come. I'm sure that we will learn a new vocab word for, and so we want to make sure that we are prepared for that and ready in a way we can respond to that, too. So this is about getting everyone on the same page, pooling these resources together. I support this and want to continue to see that work done in Lynn County.
Thank you. Jim Hauser? Sorry. I know you -- see you already, weren't you, Kirsten? I thought -- oh, I'm up next. No.
You're a Miss James.
Yes. So, Jim, how do you plan on following through with the Lynn County climate resolution passed in 2019?
Absolutely. When we rebuilt all of our county buildings from the flood of 2008, it was the board's challenge back then to build to the best lead that we could, and we built all of our buildings with lead silver. So we're top-notch with all of our county buildings that were rebuilt post-flood. During my tenure, I promoted electric charging stations, and I didn't get that through with the board members. We had opposition, but electric charging stations is something I think we should have at various county locations for people to be able to charge their vehicles when they come down to do county business. Solar panels, we looked at solar panels once to put them on our administrative office building, and at the time, it was very expensive, but I would still promote solar panels for all of our county buildings. Plus, I support the commercial solar installations at the DAEC and the one up north in Cog, and I think it's one of the futuristic ways that we can generate electricity for our needs. Lynn County established a Soil Conservation Department. This goes back to 25, 30 years ago, and that department has been in place to help us with soil conservation, soil preservation, and make sure we build waterways on farms that promote soil conservation and prevent soil runoff. So we've already done a lot of things. I think we should look at electric vehicles for our county government. We have short-term use inside of a county that's pretty much a defined area, and I think electric vehicles would be the optimum things for us to migrate to and stop burning fossil fuels when all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten, how do you plan on following through with the Lynn County climate resolution passed in 2019?
You know, I think it's a good thing just to sort of dust off that resolution and any other resolutions that have been passed in the last couple of years, and make sure that we're really following through with the intent of that, reducing our carbon either by the year 2050 or as soon as possible, our carbon footprint that we have here in the county. That means supporting renewables, and to do that, that means having tough conversations with neighbors sometimes. It also means doing it in a safe way, taking into consideration people's lands as well, their own property. But I am absolutely for reducing our carbon footprint for not only these federal dollars, but any dollars that the county spends in the future that whatever level, gold, silver, that we can get certified in, that we can move forward with a thought of the sustainability for our county, for our climate, and also take into consideration, I think about my own kid and the other kids in my neighborhood, what are we leaving behind for them? And I think that the 2019 resolution was a really good sort of roadmap. We can push that even further. I'm excited about, even since the floods of '08, the reduction of coal emissions in this county has gone down. We still -- there are particulate matter issues that we need to work on, and also we need to continue to work on air quality. I know our Department of Public Health, under the guidance of Jim Houdina for many years, did an amazing job looking at air quality. I think we need to continue with sustainability, reduction of carbon, but then also making sure that we can breathe the air in our county now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next question has to do with urban versus rural. Jim Hauser, I'm going to ask you to answer this first. How do you plan to work with both urban and rural constituents in Lynn County?
Well, I think if you look back at my past and my history, I have a longstanding working relationship with rural and urban constituents. The District One now has been redesigned, so it does include a portion of rural Lynn County in the southwest corner of our county. But at one -- once upon a time, for the time I served on a three-member board, we were at large. So I was representing everybody in Lynn County, and I have a lot of established relationships around the county with the farming community, so I fully understand their needs. And that was one of the things that prompted me to promote redoing our district road shops to get better service delivery and quality of service to our rural constituents with our shops relocated in areas that better serve the needs of our rural constituents. And of course, the local option sales tax is being used 25 percent is for property tax reduction for the rural unincorporated, so that they have a 25 cents off their property tax percent, off their property taxes based on local option sales tax. That was a commitment by the board for the rural unincorporated. And I just think that I hit the ground running with my experiences out there in the rural and my relationships, and I think we can develop some good policy at the board level. Thanks.
Kirsten. How will you work with both rural and urban constituents in Lynn County?
Thank you for this question. The past 13 years as a state representative, I have had Fairfax and Walford and the rural areas sort of around the airport and such, and I have worked with rural and urban. I have a history of it. The mayor of Fairfax is supporting me in this campaign, not just because I bug them all the time, but because we work really well together on issues that have come up, state, county, city. I want to make sure that, you know, not only with the ARPA funds, that everyone across the county gets a fair shake at those, but then also when other funding comes through, either working with the NPO, the Metro Planning Organization, and other organizations, working with the COGS, or East Central Iowa COG, Council of State Government, that we make sure it's fair and balanced, because if one part of the county is hurting and not doing well, then the whole county is hurting and not doing well. And these are our friends and neighbors, and it matters. It matters if Ely's doing well, it matters if Fairfax is doing well, and it matters if Walford is doing well. I have built those relationships, and I want to be able to use them then for the benefit of the entire county and those folks. And so that's one reason I'm running. I have a history of winning recently in those rural areas, and I can make sure that I'll continue to work real hard so that this seat remains a Democratic seat and that we have a Democratic majority on the county Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bree Oxley, how will you work with both urban and rural constituents in Lynn County?
Yeah, this is a great question. So we are so fortunate through redistricting that this district has a beautiful balance of urban with our Cedar Rapids section and our rural with the places that have been mentioned as well, that cover this west side down. I kind of call it that college community corner, and go all the way to the back of the Palisades as well, too. So this is a large geographic district. So I love both rural and urban. I grew up in rural Lynn County. Our family farm of 179 years is over there. Many of my family still lives in specifically rural Lynn County and other parts around the state of Iowa, too. So I know what it's like to grow up in a 1A school, to play sports that could be A, 1A, that's a brand-new designation, and going through that. It's so important that we listen to both and show up to both. I have enjoyed going to city council meetings and Easter egg hunt and so many other things in our rural portion of this district over the last few months as well. I think it's so important that we give a voice and we give time to both of those. And then on the urban side, I teach at Roosevelt Middle School and have for five years, and so that's been really important to hear what our most diverse members of our communities are saying. Roosevelt speaks 19 different languages at any given time and year, and we have more immigrants and refugees that are coming in and out. This is a really, really important thing that our county needs to also mention even more, just hand-in-hand with rural. One of the things that will stay with me forever is last year I was at the Lynn County Fair, love to frequent that. I was bidding on some coal latches, and between that, going to FFA presentations and looking at some things that had been built. And I saw from our Albernett School, they had talked about agriculture and sent some to one of our Cedar Rapids elementary schools to help with our food shortages and to educate them on what that rural life was like. I would love to continue projects like that and expand that more with our schools. Thanks.
Okay, Kirsten, you're going to get the next question first, and that is with regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And tell us how you think Lynn County can work to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion?
It's sort of a call of our times right now for all elected officials at all levels of government to work on equity and inclusion. I think it's working with our sustainability -- I think it's working with our Sustainability Director, the new one at Lynn County. It's also working with, you know, the schools. Some of the questions that were asked today, talking about housing, talking about workforce development, just making sure that everybody has a fair shake and a fair chance. And I will continue with that. I have my voting record. I, it backs up that I believe in that and that I will move forward in the importance of using equity when we look at not only policy but our budgets. So not only my record, but if, kind of going back again, if we have, you know, different populations, and I've had a lot of work over the years with the refugee populations that have come into our area, whether they're in my house district or not, with the Catherine McCulley Center and a couple other organizations. But again, if we have a sector or a population within our county that is struggling, then all of us are struggling. And so we need to do the best we can to move forward to make this county a great place where everybody wants to live, regardless of their social, economic background. And to do this, not just for, you know, to stand up and, you know, get a press release out for it or do it in front of the news, but to be living it and doing it all the time. When the cameras aren't looking, when people aren't looking, making sure that no one is left behind in our community to move us forward. So I think it needs to be ingrained in our policies. It's, I think we've taken some good steps forward under the current Board of Supervisors with some of their plans and the new Sustainability Director. And hope to move forward in that area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Bree Oxley, you're up. How can Lynn County work to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion?
This is an extremely important topic. And first, let me say, so yeah, well, let me just say it. Diversity, equity, inclusion. We throw out DEI so much. So I just kind of want to provide that baseline conversation for all of us there. This is not just about race when we mention DEI work. This can be gender. This can be religion. This can be age. And we could go on to so much more as well, ability level. And as a teacher, I see this every single day in my classroom, in my school, and other schools in Lynn County as well, too. This is a huge focus that the county has had and needs to continue to have. I know the Cedar, the city of Cedar Rapids and Marion have done some work on this as well, ingraining it in policies, hiring coordinators. And I think this is a great step forward. And we can continue to educate others as well, too. I know Ann Harris Carter was just hired as the DEI Coordinator for Lynn County Public Health, which has been huge because we know our marginalized communities get hit the hardest when we have a crisis like COVID. And then let's pull that into things like derecho, floods, and housing crisis that we have. And so we need to make sure we're including all folks in our conversation. So we not only educate ourselves, we educate each other so we can all move forward helping everyone. Some nonprofits we have that are doing great work, too, lifting them up to the county level so it's not just a Cedar Rapids or a Marion piece. We're getting them out to our rural sections, too, heading to the Lynn County Fair and vice versa for other events happening here with ASJ, United We March Forward, Catherine McCulley Center, and so much more. I hear all the time on doors and at events, people are concerned about housing, mental health, and disaster preparedness. DEI is ingrained in all of that. Yes, we need to pull it out to talk about it. But really, we know that we're doing the work the best when it's already ingrained in these discussions that we have every single time.
Thank you. Jim Hauser, how can Lynn County work to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Well, Lynn County has a longstanding promotion of diversity and inclusion. We worked with our HR Director way back many years ago to try to include the diverse population in our workforce at the Sheriff's Office, at the Secondary Roads Department. We had a note there that we were always 100% white. We worked to try to change that. I do totally agree with all the things that have happened in the last few years with the Sustainability Coordinator being hired at the county level, working for the Board of Supervisors, and also Ann Carter Harris at the Lynn County Public Health Department to help those people that are in those social, economic areas that need the outreach and the specific help to get them into the programming that's needed. And of course, now with the ARPA funding, that has funding available to enhance the private nonprofit groups in Lynn County, to give them funding, to bring them to, like what Bree had mentioned, to county-level programming, to get out there into the county, into the small cities, and get everybody together in inclusion and make them feel that they're a part of our county and a good place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bree, you're going to be leading off with our next question that has to do with farming, specifically regenerative farming practices. This questioner says that regenerative farming practices have many benefits to local ecosystems and communities. How do you plan on supporting a healthier local farm system?
Yeah. So this hits, once again, on kind of our urban-rural pieces that we talk about, too, and how we make sure we're continuing to talk about both and giving both their day in the sun as well as we start to talk about those. So this is a great question here. Through work with climate change, as we talk more about how what we are doing as humans is affecting our climate around us, floods, derecho, I know it's a broken record. You guys know it's a broken record, too. We're tired of this happening. This is a piece of what we can bring into that as well. And it doesn't have to be an urban-rural battle for this, or a green jobs versus, you know, our jobs we've had or farming jobs. We can use these to work together. Kirkwood has a great ag department. Actually, one of my previous science teachers helps work that out there, too. So that's pretty cool. And so I think what we do is we start to tap into these experts, whether it's our Secretary of Agriculture, it's going to Kirkwood where we make it local. And we talk about best practices for the environment and for what that farm is providing. It does not have to be one or the other. But once again, it's about getting to that hearts and minds piece, and the action will follow after. So we have to look at these things moving forward of what's going to help when we talk about water quality. I know another forum was talking about CAFOs and farms and our livestock around, too. So what are we going to do and who are we going to bring into this conversation? The county is great because we can kind of transcend all of those as well, too. So who are we bringing in from other parts of the county or maybe neighboring counties that can come in and provide some guidance for us as well? So we're doing this together, and it's not the supervisors dictating it or one conservation group dictating it. It's about working together to come up with the best solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Jim Hauser, how do you plan on supporting a healthier local farm system?
As I mentioned before, we established the Lynn County Soil Conservation Department, and that person works for Lynn County. And it also has federal support behind it. And that person that's been in that position, now John Gallagher's been there for quite a while. But he works with the farming community, trying to show them how to do better farming practices, the different types of tilling, the different types of waterways, and different ways to prevent runoff and to have better use of a farm and not be out there spending a lot of extra money with burning fossil fuels, doing things that aren't productive for a good outcome of crop. And then, of course, we bought that land out there near Skaw Creek Park. And we've got a project going out there where we're doing the urban farm. And they just hired a developer here in the last six months that's going to go out there and promote the development of some small-scale development out there with gardens and small-scale farming operations. So we have a longstanding commitment to preserve the land, to farm it in the best way possible and to prevent soil runoff. So I think Lynn County is a leader in the state with our Soil Conservation Department. It was established way back in about 1989, '87 in that timeframe. So it's been around a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten, how do you plan on supporting healthier local farm systems?
The, one of the best ways to support local healthier farm systems is to not only build on what's been going on with the Lynn County soil folks, but, and working with collaborations, not only with Kirkwood, but a lot of our organizations like Feed Iowa First. I was on that board and volunteered with them for many years and, you know, small, local farms across the county. But I think it's having conversations with farmers themselves. I've been door-knocking a lot. I've been, and, you know, even, we've got some rural areas, too, where folks farm and having those conversations. I think the number-one thing we can do is make sure that we're not looking at the farmer as the bad guy. But it's their land. It's their family land. And, you know, the farm visits that I have gone on as around Lynn County and a couple other counties around here and get out and talk with the farmers, they want to do right, not only for their land, for generations to come, for their farm, but also for their communities. And I think it's us collaborating, sharing their ideas, and hearing how we can best serve them instead of us coming in with a plan saying, you know, here, farmers, you do this, dah, dah, dah. I think we need to do a little bit better on this front, sitting down, listening, coordinating that also under sustainability, because that's a big part of it. And the agriculture, when we talk about farming, about 85% of the corn and beans in the state of Iowa come to the west side of Cedar Rapids, either through, you know, the largest ethanol plant in North America, ADM, the Cargills, the ingredient, used to be Penneken Ford. All of those folks are, you know, part of this cycle. And it starts with making sure that we're doing right. We're having those conversations with our local farmers. Thank you.
So the time has gone very quickly. Before we move to our closing statements, I just want to thank all of the candidates for their participation. I want to thank all of you, the questioners. I can tell you that there were many topics that we didn't get to cover today, including mental health or the size of the Board of Supervisors or the relations between the supervisors and the city of Cedar Rapids, refugees, water quality, solar, flood protection. So those of you who posed questions that did not get asked, I hope that you will stay afterwards and engage our candidates on a one-on-one basis because you deserve to have answers to your questions as well. Reminder to you about voting. Absentee ballot request forms are available at the back of the room. And you can fill that out. And one of the members of the coalition will make sure that they get to the Lynn County Elections Office. The deadline is Monday to submit your absentee ballot request form. But in-person voting via satellite is currently open. It started on Wednesday. You can vote in person at the Lynn County Auditor's Office at the Jean Oxley Public Service Center, 935 Second Street Southwest. And that's between 7:30 a.m. and 4 o'clock p.m. So, closing statements. Bree Oxley, you are going to be the first speaker for closing statements, and you have two minutes.
All right, thank you. Once again, thanks to the League. This stuff takes a lot of time to plan. It's many hours on a Saturday or whatever night. So thank you to all of you for coming here and putting this on for us and for the viewers as well. Thanks again to the Cedar Rapids Library for hosting us, for Pro Video, for always filming everything, getting it out there for voters to see and for our audience in the room and that will be watching this later as well. Once again, I am Bree Oxley. I have been a teacher for 10 years. I have taught at Roosevelt here in Cedar Rapids for the last five years, and it has been a ride. Everything I have seen, from housing to mental health to food insecurity, and the list goes on and on, as my education friends know. I want to take that to the county level. I believe that we can form a relationship between our schools and the county government to make them work for each other. And I care deeply about that because when our community does well, our schools do well, and vice versa. I was a teacher, and I was there handing out food and supplies after the 2016 flood and after derecho. I was here at school doing that, at a local union building on the IBW Hall and over on that side of the county as well, too, because all county residents matter. I was there for the George Floyd march. I had many students who protested not only at that, but other events to come, too, and were able to have their voices heard. I have been there for climate protests, for labor protests, and many more. I will continue to be there for the groups I have served and those who are also out in our community. My track record proves that, and I look forward to having a chance to do that. Once again, as a government teacher, I would also be remiss if I didn't share absentee ballots for the requests due on Monday. In-person voting has started. Day of voting is June 7. If you feel inspired today, please head over to the Jean Oxley Building. Voting is open from 11 to 3, and I hope to have your support. Thank you.
Jim Hauser, your closing statement, please. You have two minutes.
First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my wife, Arlene, who's in the back of the room. We just celebrated 35 years of Marriage Monday of this week. So thank you, Arlene, for supporting me and my candidacy. I'd just like to let people know, I'm a native Cedar Rapidian. And I think I said that before, my parents were Czech and Ukrainian descent. And I've been a member of the Smart Local 263 here in Cedar Rapids. And I retired from the Lynn County Sheriff's Department Reserve, spent a number of years on the Sheriff's Department volunteering my time to serve our community. My goal as supervisor is to represent both the urban and rural citizens and to improve their quality of life. I've used my experience to hit the ground running and guide the county into the future for whatever it may hold. And I want to thank the League for having this event, to thank the Beam's Auditorium for allowing us to be here. And I look forward to your support on June 7. The primary will be here in a couple of weeks. And we can carry on and make this a better place to live and work and play. And we'll all be proud of Lynn County, Iowa. Thank you very much.
Kirsten, you get the final word. Your closing statement, you have two minutes.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and for all who are here today, anyone who takes time to listen to this video. Appreciate them, too. Appreciate my husband, my support team, some of them are here today. They're the ones who are helping me with postcards, door-knocking, and helping me get ready for phone calls and stuff for this campaign. My campaign has really been about the people in District One and making sure that they get a fair shake, making sure that folks know. And, you know, people know that I'm a bulldog for the west side and I always have been. But I want to make sure that I can take that and be a bulldog and a fighter and a supporter for the entire county, making sure that everyone gets a fair shake, whether it's rural, urban, or not. I also attended protests, but then I've also been in the trenches doing policy work, working across the Iowa aisle, having those really hard conversations and building those relationships, some of them very hard. Things that I can do that maybe set me apart is the work that I've done at the state and in building those relationships. So when we are trying to have discussions about federal funding or we're, you know, mental health access center or things like that, and we have discussions with the state on funding, I know and I can sit down and people trust me. I'm not running to the newspaper every minute, every time we have a, you know, discussion. But that, I'm somebody that you can work with to move everyone forward in the county. I have fresh ideas. I'm a Democrat. I'm not changing parties. I don't flip-flop on progressive ideas like minimum wage or living wages or things like that. I'm not only born or raised in the west side of Cedar Rapids, but came back after college and chose to live there. I know that, you know, others maybe have moved to the west side to run for this seat. But I really want folks to know that my ambition is for the people in District One and not for my own political ambition. That's why I'm running and asking for your vote. Thank you.
Now we can clap.